I call the January fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen Finance Committee meeting to order at six forty-six P. M. The Chair would entertain a motion for consideration of claims.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we consider bills to be paid in the amount of four hundred and sixty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars and ninety-seven cents. Payroll liabilities for one, three of nineteen in the amount of two hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty-eight cents for a total of six hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty-five cents.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on those? I guess, just recognizing that this is a little bit different than what we had had on the agenda first printed, it was from a memorandum that we had just gotten tonight from Ms. Harris with the addition of two items. All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, vote aye, motion passes. And this is not on the agenda as well, but I guess we're first meeting of the year. We need to elect a Chair to the Finance Committee this meeting.
Yes, Your Honor.
What's the procedure we've done for that in the past?
Generally speaking, a motion by a member to select one of the individuals on the committee, and then a second, and then a vote.
Okay. I'm willing to still serve if one of you want to.
I'll move that you consider the roll, Mr. Chairman.
I would second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that motion passes as well, and I'll keep going in that capacity. Thank you. I enjoy it. I want to continue doing this. All right, any other business then?
Your Honor, I just look forward to you hearing the financial audit report this evening and the fiscal health report. It will be presented at the council meeting.
Good.
Nothing additionally, Your Honor.
Okay, then we are adjourned at six forty-eight P. M.
Now I'll call the January fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen Regular Meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at seven o'clock. Would Councilman Mike Bailey lead us in the pledge, and afterwards would Councilmember Borders lead us in the invocation, please?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening to humbly ask for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Lord, thank you for many blessings and all that you do for us. We pray that our efforts are blessed with insight, guided by understanding and wisdom, as we work to serve our community and its citizens. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Do the roll call. Would the City Clerk please conduct the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilwoman Carla Borders.
Yes, here.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilwoman Rebecca Schatz.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Mayor Richard Gard.
Here. The Chair would entertain a motion to excuse Councilman Peterson.
Motion to excuse Councilman Peterson.
Second.
Any discussion on the subject? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Aye. Mayor votes aye. Motion passes. I declare we have a call, the decorum is present, approval of the agenda. The Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor votes aye, motion passes. Communication from the floor, citizens comments, anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record.
Good evening. I'm Jim Davis. I think everybody knows me, but...
It's nice to have you, Jim.
Yeah, Director of the Chamber of Commerce. As per the policy of the Windowed Visitors Council and the Tourism Asset Development Grant Program, twice a year we're requested to give you an overview of what has happened, like in July, and then at the end of the granting year. And that's the sheet that I put at your stations, the yellow and green and white sheets. And the entities listed were the entities that requested funding. If you flip it over to the backside, it'll tell you that there was a hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and thirty-three requests. There was seventy-three thousand, four hundred and thirty-three allocations, and in actuality, we only paid out fifty-three thousand, one oh seven ten. So that means that most of these entities did not have adequate receipts to receive their full funding. Because we don't, the way it works is they spend the money, then we reimburse them. And if they don't have enough receipts to cover all of the requests, then they don't get the money. So that money then will be rolled over into this next year's granting period. And I mailed the grant forms last week to the same entities and a few more, and the requests need to be in by the middle of February.
Jim, is that because they didn't spend the money, or they just didn't?
Didn't spend the money, yeah.
They didn't record it well?
Well, no, they didn't. Well, they didn't come up with receipts for it. So whether they didn't spend it well, or they didn't, they anticipated they were going to do more than they did, you know, I mean, there's always a certain amount of that, you know. But we do encumber those funds, and we don't try to do additional funding during the year, but if something does come up, there is usually enough to do that. I would bring it to your attention that we do earmark ten thousand dollars to the FAST Committee out of this fund.
Good. That's nice of you. Appreciate that.
Well, it's all part of the effort. Any questions?
Any discussion?
Okay.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
I think you all know where I'm at.
Anybody else in the audience?
I'm Ken Weber, President of Reach, and I'm here possibly to discuss anything pertaining to the containers. So I'll wait until I hear what you have to say.
Super. We'll call you back up if we need to. Thanks.
I'm Ray Barta. I'm here to express some concerns about the shipping containers. Congratulations, Mayor Gard.
Thank you, Ray. We'll address the shipping containers in a later segment. So will any other questions besides that aren't on the agenda? Seeing none, we would move to consent agenda. Would the City Clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the minutes, January second, two thousand and nineteen Regular Council Meeting. Approval of the minutes, January second, two thousand and nineteen Executive Session. Approval of the minutes, January fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen Finance Committee Meeting. Approval of the Finance Committee Recommendations for January fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Approval of the Municipal Court Report for the month of December, two thousand and eighteen, and replat of Larson Family Edition.
Are there any items requiring further discussion?
Your Honor, recommendations from the Finance Committee are for bills to be paid in the amount of four hundred and sixty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars and ninety-seven cents. Payroll liabilities for January third, two thousand and nineteen in the amount of two hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty-eight cents for a total of six hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty-five cents.
Thank you, Councilman Hancock. Chair would entertain a motion as presented.
So moved that we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Any further discussion or amendments?
Your Honor, I will abstain from the Bailey Enterprises item on the Finance Committee report and the replat item on the consent agenda.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, mayor votes aye. The Fiscal Year seventeen through eighteen Audit Report, Finance Director's Report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Our auditors, Anton Collins and Mitchell, L.L.P., performed the annual audit for Fiscal Year seventeen eighteen in accordance with government auditing standards issued by the Comptroller General of the United States. It is the responsibility of the staff and management to comprise the financial statements for the city of Riverton. However, it is the auditor's responsibility to express an opinion on the financial statements based on the audit. The auditors have found that the financial statements fairly represent the financial opinion of all government funds, business-type activities, and cash flows for the city of Riverton. On the phone with us this evening, we have Dennis Chalker, who is the partner at Anton Collins and Mitchell, and Abby Hagerman, who is the senior manager of the auditing firm, and they would like to present the findings on their reports this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mia. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, we can.
Perfect. So unfortunately, Dennis Chalker was not being able to join us tonight. I'm at home. My husband had some surgery today, so it's just me. But Dennis sends his regards and expresses his appreciation for the continued opportunity to provide audit services to the city of Riverton.
Well, I hope your husband gets...
I know that...
I hope your husband gets well.
Thank you. He seems to be doing all right. He's upstairs with the kids, so I can't complain. So your agenda, of course, is always full. I have a few items to go over with you tonight, and then if anybody has any questions, I'll open it up at the end. So the first thing that I want to talk about is the communication requirements of an audit firm to their client. And the first is that audit standards require us to send letters directly to the City Council notifying you that we're going to do an audit and what our findings are at the conclusion of the audit. The letters formally invite any member of City Council to contact the auditors directly. You can visit us when we come for preliminary work in the summer, or for field work in the fall, or at any other time throughout the year. We obviously work closely with your staff, specifically the Finance Department, but ultimately, the top level of governance is you guys as the mayor and City Council, so all of our reports are addressed specifically to you. The Auditing Standards Council of the AICPA would require us to communicate any instances of errors or irregularities, illegal acts, significant changes in accounting policies, lack of cooperation, or scope limitations. Thankfully, I don't have to report any of those items to you guys.
Thank you.
As for the engagement itself, Mia's report summarized very clearly what we did, so this is going to sound a little bit redundant. But we are engaged to audit the financial statements of the city. This year, it was for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty eighteen, in compliance with generally accepted auditing standards. And the objective of a financial statement audit is to provide reasonable, but not absolute assurance that the financial statements are free of material misstatements. Additionally, because you're a governmental entity, you're subject to have your internal controls over financial reporting and compliance and other matters in accordance with government auditing standards. If we find any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, they're communicated to the council. So what happened? We did the engagement, we did the audit, the results of the audit. We've issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, and that's the best opinion that you can receive. This means that we were able to provide reasonable assurance that the financial statements were prepared, free of material misstatements. During the tests of the internal controls over financial reporting and compliance, we also noted no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. The city of Riverton is also subject to what is called a single audit. It's part of the Uniform Grant Guidance, and that's because the city spent more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal funds. There's special tests that we do inside of that, and the program, the federal award program that was selected was the Airport Improvement Program, and we're happy to report that we found no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies associated with that. So in closing, we have unmodified opinions, no findings, and a special thanks to your staff. Everyone is timely and accommodating and very knowledgeable. They're great to work with. Everything we ask for just shows up nice and clean. If we have questions, they're ready to jump in and help us find the answers. So it's a pleasure to work with you, and we're sorry for the delay that we didn't get to you guys in December, so we appreciate your patience. So at this time, I would open it up if there are any questions.
Any questions? You probably can't see our thumbs up, but I think we got some thumbs up, so I think we're all right.
Awesome. That's a direct reflection of you guys. We just came in to do the work.
Yeah, we have wonderful staff, especially on our finance side, so we appreciate your effort.
Absolutely. And we're looking forward to working with you, Mr. Mayor, as you're coming in and continuing to, you know, provide audit services going forward.
Thank you very much. Is there any other?
Your Honor, I believe it would be appropriate for council to accept the audit formally.
Okay. The Chair would entertain a motion to accept the FY eighteen Audit Report.
Your Honor, I would move that we approve the year-end Fiscal Year eighteen Audit Report.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Abby.
All right, thank you, guys. Have a wonderful evening.
We'll move on to item ten, consideration of the ordinance number eighteen dash zero one six on the third reading, International Building Code, IBC update. Would the City Clerk please read the ordinance number eighteen dash zero one six by title only, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed Ordinance Number eighteen dash zero one six on third and final reading. An ordinance amending Title fifteen Buildings and Construction, revising Chapter fifteen point zero four Building Construction and Maintenance Codes, Section fifteen point zero four point zero one zero Adoption, applicability, filing, subsection titles A one, A two, A two six, A three, A four, A five, A six, A seven, A eight, A nine, at the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number eighteen dash zero one six on the third reading, final reading.
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Larson.
I'm wondering on that limit on five thousand square feet on water suppression or fire protection. When cities adopt processes with numbers on them, they tend to build houses at four hundred or four thousand, seven hundred and fifty, four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five, four hundred and, four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine. And I'm really wondering statistically what the benefit is. If, I would like to know how many houses we've had down in the golf course that have caught fire in the last ten years that are over two thousand square feet. And I, I only know of one house in several years. It was mine on Broadway. They caught fire and was gutted. It didn't have a sprinkler system, and if it had this sprinkler system, it probably would have made, been made out of PVC and would have melted anyway. I'm just questioning, when we add cost to new manufacturing and some new manufacturing, when I started in the mortgage business, I thought it was expensive at a hundred and eight dollars a square foot. I mean, that was golf course versus eighty-seven, seventy-five. Now it's considerably more. It's up to, I would say, probably four and a quarter if you put in a sprinkler system like that. And I'm wondering the benefit. I mean, we're not in California, and I can say that we don't have to put up our own solar electrical on our roofs that they passed city and statewide in California, fortunately. But I'm just wondering how good that really is. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other discussion? I have some questions. Eric, we talked a little bit earlier about this. It's both levels, below grade and above grade, correct?
Correct. The five thousand square feet would be what the assessor bases your square footage on, so finished livable space.
So if the basement was unfinished at the time of construction, would it not be considered?
Correct.
So you could have a house as small as twenty-five hundred square feet on its main level with a full basement that would need to be suppressed in this code. Is that correct?
Correct.
I guess my, and I have a lot of experience in this, I like to encourage everyone to build in Riverton and build as big a house as they can afford. And so I would be suggesting that this is a little bit, I don't see a lot of difference, you know, in the construction of a nine hundred square foot house to a five thousand square foot house. They both have the same kitchens and utility rooms and utility rooms. I would, I would suggest that we might entertain a motion that would, would take that five thousand square feet off of that and pass the fact that we don't have sprinkler suppression in the city of Riverton for residential residences. That's just my comments. I don't, I can't make those, so if no one else feels that way, they'll, they'll have to make a motion, and we'll discuss it from there.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Can provide a few of the answers that Councilman Larson had asked.
Would you please?
According to the NFPA, the National Fire Protection Agency, the likelihood of a fatality reduces by eighty percent with homes with fire suppression systems and property damage by seventy-one percent. The National Fire Protection Agency also monitored the associated cost of installation. In two thousand and eight, the cost of installation of a fire suppression system was a dollar sixty-one per square foot. In two thousand and thirteen, it dropped to one thirty-five a square foot, a sixteen percent reduction in seven years. In jurisdictions mandating fire suppressions in all new residential construction, which is what the IBC actually recommends, the cost drops to below a dollar per square foot. For homes over five thousand square feet, this translates into an additional cost between approximately six thousand and eight thousand dollars. If the total cost of construction is between five hundred thousand and a million dollars, a fire suppression system would represent between point five and one point five percent of the total construction cost. Combining required fire alarms with a fire suppression system is analogous to operating a vehicle with seat belts and airbags. It just provides an extra layer of defense at a relatively low cost. One of the factors that led to the decision that the Board of Appeals made was the increase in probability of a fire beginning in an unoccupied portion of a larger home, which would delay identification of the location of the fire as well as notification to the fire department. So with that, I would entertain any amendments you might...
Thank you.
...to provide additional information.
Councilman Bailey?
I guess there has to be such a small percentage of the homes that are over five thousand square feet. I just, I guess, to me, I would have to agree that I don't see where this is even going to apply to very many homes, not to mention that we haven't probably had any built that size in the last ten years, maybe. I'm just assuming without seeing the numbers. So I guess to me, it's, I would have to agree that I think maybe just say that we're not going to do on a residential. I know that we do on commercial if it meets certain specifications, which, again, I got to be one of the lucky ones that built a building... to be one of the lucky ones that built a building that put a sprinkler system in, and it was definitely over $1 a square foot that it cost to do that. I guarantee, so it was quite expensive.
You're saying the figures are wrong?
Well, I don't know about residential. I would assume it must be different than commercial, but on my commercial property, it was probably more like $5 or $6 a square foot.
So it didn't add $6,000 to cost you?
A little more than that, yes. So considerable.
Well, and some other indications of that is the type and construction that's put in. Typical house has a 3/4 inch water supply. Maybe a larger house could, would buy a 1-inch supply, and we can do that in the city of Riverton. So, but most commercial buildings that have suppressed sprinklers are required to put in a larger supply of water, and so they're able to help and assist in that fire protection. You know, I just think that it's an added cost, and we're trying to encourage construction in Riverton, at least I am, and I would, I think it's $6,000 to $8,000 that would be better off spend on the residents, and that's my feeling, and I don't see that. We do already require that we have smoke alarms in all sleeping areas, smoke alarms in all gathering areas, and so it's not like we're without fire protection systems. And as I talked with you, I went ahead and put in one that calls the fire department directly when it's set off. People have other options, so that would still be my thought is to not require additional cost to the construction. We would need an amendment to be put forward, or we'll go, we'll move ahead with what we have in front of us.
Your Honor, I would propose that we, I would move that we make an amendment to the proposed ordinance 18-016 to remove fire suppression systems from residential totally.
Second.
All in favor of the amendment of removing the fire suppression requirement to the residential housing of the IBC? All in favor vote aye.
Aye.
I think on the third, we have to.
We, well, on this amendment, we just, and so the mayor votes aye on the amendment also, and so was that unanimous? Was that six? So seven to zero on the amendment. So now we'll have to move forward on the original amendment, or the original ordinance, and we'll do that with the city clerk. Please conduct the roll call vote.
Yes, Your Honor. Councilman Kyle Larson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rebecca Schatz?
Yes.
Councilman Mike Bailey?
Yes.
Councilman Tim Hancock?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carla Borders?
Yes.
Mayor Richard Gard?
Yes. Motion passes. We'll move on to item 11. Planning Commission appointment for Lance Godey as alternate. The community directors report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Planning Commission has had three members resign in the last couple months, those being Mark Sainert, Sean Testman, and Dan Moline. This leaves the commission short two alternate members. The appointment of Mr. Godey will be for one four-year term. His appointment will represent fulfillment of one of the two remaining alternate positions. The commission will still need one alternate member. Staff recommends the mayor with council concurrence appoint Mr. Godey to the Planning Commission. With that, I'd stand for any questions you might have.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion for the mayor's appointment of Lance Godey as an alternate to the Planning Commission. Lance is.
Second.
Lance is here with us tonight, and I appreciate your attendance, Lance, and we look forward to working with you. Lance is already on the Solutions Committee and a hardworking member of those committees, and we appreciate your willingness to be an alternate. At this time, we would, I would like to mention that there's always need of citizen input in all of our committees, and anyone that would be interested in helping us with those, if they would direct those letters to Tony and city staff, we want you on those committees and we need your input. So thanks, Lance, I appreciate it. Any further discussion? All those in favor would vote aye.
Aye.
Mayor votes aye. Motion passes. Public defender appointment, Jane Juve. The city administrators report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Your Honor, with previously this last year, right at the end, we unfortunately experienced the loss of our public defender who passed away, and that was Gordon Ellis. He'd been our public defender for a little while and a part of our team, and that was a sad loss for us. But moving forward, staff did advertise for the vacancy. It occurred to us during our discussion that previously, I think, that position was appointed by the administrator. However, our current reading shows that's a mayoral appointment and is appropriate that it is so. So we did receive, we did advertise, and we did receive one application for the position this time. Jane Juve is here, and she is proposed as that appointment by the mayor and is recommended by staff. We have had the opportunity to work with Jane in the past. She was the community ombudsman for, right when I got here, and she was very informative. She also served as the city attorney in the past, so we have, already have a good working relationship with her. We would have, Jane is here if there's any questions, and we would stand for any questions you might have.
Seeing none, we'll move forward. The Chair would entertain a motion to appoint Jane Juve as a public defender for the Riverton Municipal Court.
So moved.
Second.
Having none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mayor votes aye. Public hearing to consider the ordinance number 19-001, first reading, shipping containers in residential zoning, community development, community development directors report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The existing municipal code defines a shipping container as a metal fabricated reusable box designed for shipping merchandise by rail, truck, or vessel. However, the code does not contain any provision for their use. In October of 2007, substantial changes were made to Chapter 17, zoning of the Riverton Municipal Code. Among those changes was proposed verbiage excluding the use of shipping containers in residential and commercial office zoning. The restriction on shipping containers within the proposed ordinance was removed in the interest of moving the rest of the changes through third and final reading. The intent was to revisit the discussion surrounding shipping containers, however, the issue was not brought up again. With this in mind, staff is requesting approval of ordinance 19-001 on first reading to provide modicum verbiage to the code in reference to shipping containers and their use, specifically within residential zones. From an engineering standpoint, anytime an item is repurposed, it should be met with some trepidation and careful consideration. Shipping containers are specifically designed to meet the requirements placed on them during the use as defined above, shipping merchandise by rail, truck, or vessel. They are generally constructed to be airtight and weatherproof, ostensibly making them ideal as storage units. However, while used to ship merchandise, they generally have strict regulations on what can be placed in them during transit. The ability to monitor the contents of containers evaporates when they are repurposed as storage units in a residential area. Given their ability to be sealed when closed and a lack of ventilation, this can create substantial safety risks to individuals using the container as well as those in a large radius surrounding the container. When fuel sources contained within shipping containers are the cause of explosion, the result can be much more volatile and energetic than a normal structure. A sealed shipping container can be ruptured with the ignition of 1/4 gallon of propane. A full barbecue grilled propane tank contains 20 times that much. One such explosion occurred in British Columbia and sent one of the 400-pound doors across the street and into a park several hundred feet away. Shipping containers are generally constructed of heavy gauge steel and are much heavier per square foot of floor area than a traditional stick-built shed. This can create settling issues when placed on non-prepared foundations, especially when drainage considerations are not taken into account. Saturated soils have far less bearing capacity than soils under normal conditions. Aesthetic considerations should also be considered. Shipping containers are intended for industrial uses and constructed of steel. A question to consider would be whether or not this type of look is desirable within residential neighborhoods in Riverton. Over time, containers like this can rust, especially when they've been exposed to salt-rich environments such as seagoing containers have. Various harmful chemicals are often sprayed in the containers during transit to protect cargo. These chemicals have been known to remain in the unit for long periods of time and have been known to cause harm to humans entering those containers. Following the December 6, 2018 Planning Commission meeting, several communities similar to Riverton were asked if they allowed shipping containers in residential areas. Rock Springs, Columbus, Nebraska, Windsor, Colorado, Waterton, South Dakota, Durango, Colorado, Gillette, Wyoming, and Casper, Wyoming. With the exception of Casper, none of the communities contacted allowed shipping containers within residential zoning, citing health and human safety as the main reason for their decision. As mentioned, Casper will allow the use of shipping containers, however, the structure must comply with the International Building Code, Section 311, Low Hazard Storage Group S2, which limits considerably what may be allowed to be stored within the container. They also require compliance with the city's code relating to garages and accessory structures. At this time, staff is requesting approval of ordinance 19-001 on first reading, and I would stand for any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Your Honor. Eric, what difference does it make in terms of size? You can get a lot of different sizes. How did these concerns change with the different sizes that you might get of a shipping container?
Your Honor?
Please.
Based on the universal gas law, the larger the volume, the less explosive it would be. So the larger the container, the less effect the same amount of propane would have, or any type of explosion or fire.
Eric, that's a good question. What's the typical size of a storage container?
Eight by 20 is very standard.
So it exceeds the requirement for city permit for a storage shed?
Correct.
So with a storage shed, you can put any storage shed in as long as we stay under 200 square feet, is that correct?
Correct.
Councilman Bailey?
Your Honor, I'm glad Brett Skaggs is here tonight because he's very familiar with these containers, but I did talk to him, and from what he's saying, these containers do come with factory vents in them, so they are not airtight. And I guess my question would be, and if those vents weren't adequate even, could we not have, add venting to them and solve this issue with the flammability questions?
Your Honor?
Yes.
By all means, if they were properly vented, yes.
I guess, follow-up for me. I guess, I don't see that these storage containers are that much different than a stick-built storage building of a similar size, as it meets whatever required specifications are. You know, I mean, I've used them on my commercial property, and they seem to be good. We don't have any problems. You know, they're, the ones that I've purchased are painted, you know, decent, and they're easy to paint if you did want to paint them. No different than if you had a storage shed, you know, the paint fades on them and they get yucky looking, and you can repaint them, too. I had one that we took the big truck doors off and put a regular walk-in door in, and I mean, it works very well for storage of materials. They're, in the wintertime, the snow doesn't get in them, they're, you know, they're moisture-resistant, I guess, if that's what you want to call it. If they have vents, they could get some moisture in them, but I guess, to me, aesthetically, they're not even that much different. You know, I drove around town, there's a lot of storage sheds, and I use that term broadly, that are a lot less appealing than one of these metal storage containers would be. And so I think, you know, we would expect our people to follow the code and keep their property clean and updated and well-maintained, and whether it's a metal storage container or a traditional stick-built container, you know, building, the same thing applies. You've got to take care of your property and keep it well-maintained and all that kind of stuff. So I guess I personally don't see where there are any kind of a hazard in that respect to me, so.
Your Honor?
I admit, Mike, that you're absolutely correct. The sad thing about it is uniformity. They're all square. They fit square. They look square, and I don't, I bet if you drove around, you can't find a square house in any part of Riverton. You can find some round ones, but you can't find houses without peaks. And you can't find sheds without peaks. Now, what's that got to do with storage? Not a lot. But uniformity-wise, in a town, that's what you look at. When you look at a house, it's, sorry. Women like uniformity. They like it fits in the neighborhood. It's appealing. It's, I like that house because of the way it's uniform. And you put a breadbox in the side yard, it's going to be the best breadbox you've ever had, keeping the mice out and all that other stuff, but it's not uniform.
Let's move forward. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance number 19-001 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed ordinance number 19-001 on first reading. An ordinance amending Title 17, zoning, to revise Chapter 17.20, accessory uses, Section 17.20.030, accessory building and use, at the Riverton Municipal Code and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion, be open for, oh, excuse me, Tony?
Did we open the public hearing? Okay, I'm sorry. I jumped it. My fault.
We're going to do that.
You're on track.
We'll do that right now, Tony.
Sorry.
Would the Chair entertain a motion to open public hearing?
So moved.
Further discussion? At this time, we would like to hear, I declare, I now declare a public hearing open. The hearing will be conducted according to state statute and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record.
Your Honor, as a point of order, we had a motion and a second on the table for, to open the public hearing, and we never voted on that.
Thank you. Appreciate your help. Let's vote on that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mayor votes aye. Motion passes. Now we'll move on to declare the public hearing open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statute and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourself. and identify yourselves for the record.
My name is Ray Barta. So I'd like to state a couple of concerns that I have with these shipping containers in residential areas. I am a big fan of shipping containers. I think they're a wonderful storage unit. I think that they're watertight or close to near weatherproof. I think they're fabulous. That being said, they're an industrial piece of equipment. And why we would allow an industrial piece of equipment in a residential area is absurd. I mean, how long can you leave a track hoe parked on the city street or in your yard? So I plan on building more houses in Riverton, and I plan on bettering this community. And Councilman Larson stated that, you know, we have these nice houses with pitched roofs, and they meet building code. But a shipping container is not built to city building code. It's built to a code to ship equipment or materials. So that's an issue that I have. You know, there's a lot of people in this town that don't paint their houses. They don't paint their storage sheds. You bring a shipping container in that's been exposed to the salty climate offshore and, you know, coming across from a foreign country, and you have a storage unit that's going to start to rust. So if you don't paint your house and you don't paint your shed, why would you paint your shipping container? So you've got an industrial piece of equipment that you're probably not going to take great care of, and it's in a residential area. So those are issues for me, as well as, there's only one community in the state that's allowing these shipping containers, and that's Casper. And Casper is admittedly a very industrial town. I think that, you know, we should take into account that this is Wyoming, and we enjoy our freedoms here. But on the flip side of that, we live in town, and so there's some freedoms that you give up to live in town. And as Larson, Councilman Larson stated, you know, we expect some uniformity in our town. So I think those are all things that need to be considered. Another issue is, you know, the explosion hazard. A minimal amount of ventilation in one of these shipping containers, it may dissipate some gas that's in there. But if you have an explosion and you have a minimal amount of ventilation, that doesn't mean you're still not going to have an explosion. Also, a shipping container by the square foot is the same price or more expensive than a professionally-built storage unit or shed from skid structures. Or you could hire a local contractor to build a shed for you at the same price or less, and it's going to be much more aesthetically pleasing to our community. So those are some of my concerns, and they're my opinions. Thank you.
Ken Weber from the Reach Foundation. We in the past have been analyzing extra storage from our tenants, since the tenants we have, of course, are all elderly. About 124 units. Sometime there's two or one person in the unit. But they've always got junk. As you get older, you just got a pile of stuff. And we kind of always liked to, we really kind of liked to build one garage, one single-car garage units, because they're cheaper for them, stuff like this. But we almost had to build two cars, because they got one car, but they need the other half for extra stuff. And so we thought to be really nice to them is we'd try to establish some storage. And of course, the ones that we like were the containers. Now, I grant you, they get hot inside in the summertime, and they get cold in the wintertime, but even the wood storage ones do that. But there's a way of simply doing it. It's just drilling more little holes all the way to the top of the container, and you've got ventilation. And so as far as talking about the square box nature of it, it's the smallest space with the most square footage that's usable. And the thing is that they, it's a matter of aesthetics and the people's view of the appearance. Now, I grant you, we don't allow on our property, because we've got covenances of which we don't allow anything in the area around the houses. So we're kind of unique from the residents. But we're not questioning the code or that, and it was my understanding, you couldn't even put them in residential areas. So I don't know what the discussion's about, as far as that goes, if it was passed in the last endeavor on the containers. So down the road, if we make a decision that we like some containers, we want them as close to our property as possible for the seniors. And this would be perfect, like in our case, it'd be on a predo property, which is agricultural, so we'd have to come back to you again for a zone change or whatever to allow the containers to be put in. But we really like the containers, and we don't want to build one big unit. We want to have the containers, because at some times, they're kind of a temporary thing anyway. They may be moved, who knows? But the reason why I wanted to come down and hear what was going on is, we don't want to have any kind of obstruction on trying to continue on with the program that we've got. And so I don't know if you like Reach or not, or what we do, but the fact is that maybe all of you will be coming to see us at some time. And you might have some stuff that you'd like to store, and they would be containers if we had our right. And if it isn't going to be containers, then we just won't do it, that's all. But I think it's kind of hard to put any onerous type of conditions on individuals, especially if they're abiding by the code. And the containers, just as an example, we're talking about, okay, it might explode and everything else. Well, we've got a pitched duplex up there that literally somebody had some aviation gas in the garage. It exploded, right. The whole thing burned down. That was in a house, and that wasn't in a container. So it's really the obligation of the person of what you're putting in it. I mean, they're responsible for something. And the thing is that our people are really responsible. I mean, seniors are responsible, man. And so I'd like to make sure that when you pass something, that you're not going to restrict us from being able to help people that we want to help. Thank you.
Ken, let's get clarification on that. We're talking right now about allowing or not allowing in residential areas, are we not, Eric?
Your Honor, that's correct. I think the predo property would not fall within, because it's agricultural, so they would be able to put those containers on there.
But the discussion, Ken, is exactly that. Can people put these in residential zoning?
But I thought there was a code against that.
There is not.
You hear me?
Your Honor, no, there is not currently.
Last one I looked at on the computer, I thought that the only area was commercial, industrial, and agricultural.
Your Honor.
Yes.
The only current mention of shipping containers is in the definitions portion of the code.
So, Ken, that's exactly what we're discussing, is if we can have those in residential areas right now. So if this was to pass, yes, you could have those containers. I don't know that you would choose to put them on your residential property.
No, they wouldn't happen in Reach, I'll tell you that.
But just so you know, that's the discussion, so.
But the other point is that, well, of course, that's a beholder, but storage containers are really, really nice vehicles. And of course, the size that you mentioned was eight by twenty, but in reality, they're eight by forty, most of them. They're bigger, so the explosion that Eric had talked about, it is more volume, less potential. But that's all I got to say. Thank you.
That answered one of my questions, because I was struggling. I thought they were a little bit bigger than that. Eight by twenty would only be 160, so they'd be underneath the code requirement, right? Good thing I carry a phone. So, because I wasn't that great a mathematician in school, so they are, are they typically forty feet long?
Forty or twenty.
Forty or twenty?
Multiple sizes. You can get shipping containers that are eight by eight. You can, it depends on the company that's actually building them. The standardized sizes, you can get eight by eight. There's an eight by twenty. There's an eight by forty.
Right.
Eight by forty, or it's a nine by, it's eight feet wide but nine feet high. So there's multiple sizes that you can get. The most common footprints are eight by twenty and eight by forty. And most people in residential areas that are purchasing these are purchasing an eight by twenty. It would be very difficult to get an eight by forty into a residential area.
The mayor broke a rule there, and if anybody else wants to address us, they need to come up to the podium so that the audience can hear. So I won't direct questions to the audience. That's my fault. Is there anybody else that would like to address us on the subject?
My name is Breck Skaggs. I'm owner of Quick Space. We supply shipping containers. We've been a business for eighteen years. And in eighteen years, I don't think I've ever sold a shipping container in the city of Riverton for residential use in eighteen years. So I don't see that there's a problem. They're far superior to wood structures as far as structurally. I just, I don't see that there's a problem.
What's the price on them?
A twenty-foot container, I think, just off the top of my head, I think a new one is around $3,400.
$3,400?
Right.
And so what would be an eight by forty, which would be, you know...
I think around $4,700 for an eight by forty.
I can see why you haven't sold a lot in residential.
We sell a lot of containers.
But none in residential?
Because Riverton doesn't allow them. Right now, Riverton's been telling people they don't allow them, the building department. I had a customer just the other day come back to me, and I asked him why they told you you could not put one in the city of Riverton, and he said that they told him that it wasn't structurally sound.
Really?
Eric, can you give us any clarification there?
Your Honor, I don't recall that at all.
Now, Brett, those prices aren't bad prices, to be real truthful, for storage, for what you're getting. You know, if you go down to buy a shed, a wood shed, and some are quite aesthetically pleasing, they need more money than $4,700 and a lot less storage. Can you speak a little bit about explosive problems?
Every container I've ever owned, and we've sold hundreds of containers, every one of them have vents. They have factory-installed vents. I don't even compare them to wood structure, because there's no comparison, in my estimation.
What's the, what is, when you say they're made out of metal, what's three-eighths? What are we talking about?
No, I don't know what mill they are. The Fremont County Sheriff's Office hired us to surround the Fremont County Court to bulletproof it, when they had an issue with the shooting in the courthouse a couple of years ago.
Mike.
Your Honor. Ian, I purchased one, and like I said, we took the big swinging doors off of it and put a regular door in, and we had cut some holes in it. And it's at least eighth-inch steel, you know, corrugated, so it's strong. I mean, the walls don't flex. I mean, they are solid.
They don't blow in the wind.
From what, Brett, you know, I've seen pictures, but, you know, they're designed to be stacked fifteen tall on a ship, and so structurally, they'll take a lot of weight. I don't think you're ever going to have one cave in. I don't think you could stack two skid structures on top of each other and have them support each other. And I guess, you know, the beauty's in the eye of the holder. But again, I think people ought to be free to do whatever they want, and I think structurally, they're at least comparable to any other kind of a structure that people would put in their backyard. And I guess, if you wanted to put a little peaked roof on one, you could. You could put it on there, and people would have a hard time telling it from anything else, probably. So I mean, again, that's where, I don't think it's the job of the city to, you know, tell me what I should be doing on my property.
I think that's the issue.
As I'm not damaging my next-door neighbors.
Some people don't like the looks of them, and I feel if you don't like the look of it, don't buy one and put it in your backyard. Buy something else.
Your Honor.
Tim.
I do think, though, one of the thoughts, though, is, okay, that's one thing, if you don't want to have it in your yard, but I don't want my neighbor to have it either. And that's the discussion that we had last time. I mean, and I get what you're saying, Breck, I do, in terms of...
But why? Why don't you want your neighbor to have them?
Just aesthetically. I don't want, and...
But that's the only reason, though.
That's true, but we do a lot of things for aesthetics in the city. I mean, a lot.
But that's your opinion. Maybe somebody else's? I talk to a lot of people that love the looks of them. They like the industrial look.
I don't know, and I don't think that even Mr. Weber would be really thrilled about having all the folks over at Reach saying, "Let's put one of these in our backyard." I mean, try to convince them to do that. Even if it were legal, would they be very thrilled about that?
We can't do it. We're not interested in it.
Have you visited with any of them? Is anybody thrilled about this idea over there? I mean, so, there's a lot of things to think about, but aesthetics affect more than just your property. Your property and what you do on your property affects your neighbor's property. I mean, that's part of what we're dealing with whenever we're doing appraisals or anything like that. So I get the concern, I guess is the point, and the idea of uniformity. And I love them. I had your, I was working at the courthouse when you had those around our building. It looked a little weird, to be honest. I think everybody thought that. It was a strange thing. But in terms of whether it's in my backyard, that's the concern, really, in my mind, is the aesthetics.
I would agree that I wouldn't want somebody putting a forty-foot container in their backyard. But a twenty-foot, that's no different than a twenty-foot skid structure. I don't think you can deny it. Just because of looks?
I don't think you can get that opinion from everybody.
Not from everybody.
Well, but I'm telling you, unless you live outside the city boundaries, uniformity on property and value is very important. And I guarantee you, if you lived in the city and you had an appraisal done, and you had skid structures, and it was the best-looking skid structure, and right next to your house was a brand-new, industrial doors removed, there would be a comment on the appraisal. And if it were Nikki Tibbetts, she wouldn't miss that, and it would be a downer. And that's what we're in charge of, is uniformity. I mean, I know it doesn't make sense to you, but it makes sense to the property owner... I mean, I know it doesn't make sense to you, but it makes sense to the property owner that's affecting it. It's like the rollout garbage into the front yard or putting it back into the alleyway. We had 500 people here on that very discussion. A simple thing of blading the snow to the middle of the road brought out 150 people. Honest, it does make a difference in the codes, and I would love to put one down on, and put my tractor in it close to my office place on, on Main Street Plaza, but, you know, it's just, it doesn't look right. And that's what's important, looks.
And that's, that's your opinion?
Yeah.
Somebody else may have it, just...
And it's 25 years of opinions and appraisals, and what will go and what won't go. And so, you're right, it's my, but a conforming loan versus an individual loan, most people want a conforming loan, and they're not willing to pay five times the interest rate for non-conforming. That's what you're talking about.
I do, I do appreciate your opinion.
Your honor.
Yes.
According to this, this is a temporary structure. This says that it would be valid only at the location specified and be valid for no more than 180 days. Is that correct?
Your honor.
Yes.
Yes. That provision was placed in the proposed ordinance, based on discussion at Planning Commission. They felt that if a contractor wanted to use a, a shipping container during construction of a home, that that would be an appropriate use, and then the permit would be valid for 180 days. Or if somebody wanted to use one of the moving services that supply smaller versions of the shipping containers, such as Pods, I believe is one of the retail chains, then they could apply for the permit, pack their stuff in, leave it in their driveway until they picked it up, and then it would be gone.
That, that's part of our, that's the other part of our business, is leasing them, renting them, and mostly construction. So they're...
That, that is a provision inside the ordinance for just temporary use. So it goes with what we're doing, but the, the ordinance deals with permanent use and locating them in, and there's no, there's no exemption for size. So those are all things that we can consider, can consider a size ordinance. Now, I know of a shipping container that, and Chief Murray, Murphy can probably help me with this, I believe it's on Park in the 100 block, that's been sitting on the street for a long, long time. And so, you know, there's, there's situations that I would totally agree with, that that, that is not a proper use, I would think, on a, on a city highway, on a city road, and we probably should get that moved off the, off the road. Am I correct about that?
Sure.
I don't think so.
I think I, I think I know where it's at, so we'll, we'll look into that. And, you know, what we really want is, is compliance. I understand, you know, I understand all sides of that, but I, I also understand that people need to have choices, you know, for heaven's sakes. There's houses that I, that are boxy and flat and, and no roofs on them that are worth a lot of money, and, and you don't have to go far to find them.
Like I said before, we've been in business 18 years. I don't think I've ever placed one yet in a residence permanently. That's not so much the issue, it's just where do you guys stop? I mean, is it next, can be commercial, I'm not going to be able to lease them to Walmart or sell one to Mike Baby? Where, where do you stop?
Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from the audience? Seeing none, there being no other speakers, the chair would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Would, um, could we get some instructions on our options here?
Your honor, council may motion to approve the ordinance as presented and go through the regular steps associated with it. They can motion to amend, they can motion to table with direction, would be one, another option. So if council had consensus of what they were looking to do or how they were looking to modify it, they could table and give staff direction to bring it back with a modification. That, an example could be to make the allowance with, the same way Casper did. So you have, you have a plethora of options. It's mostly what council wants to do as a whole.
I should ask, before we proceed, is there any, with the public hearing closed, is there any discussion from the council amongst yourselves that you'd like to have on the subject?
I guess, would we need to have a motion to approve the ordinance first, or, or you're just saying irrespective of that?
Correct. We can, we can move with the, with the motion. We, actually, Kristen, you'll probably catch me up on this. We have to, we're at the point where we really have to have a vote on closing the hearing, correct?
Correct.
So let's proceed with that, and let's, let's ask for all in favor to close a public hearing. Would, all in favor say aye.
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 Mayor votes aye, motion passes. We now declare that the public hearing is closed, and the chair would entertain a motion to, to adopt ordinance number 19-001 on first reading. Do we have a motion?
Your honor, I would move that we adopt ordinance 19001 on first reading.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Your honor, just to clarify, so if, I'm not very good at this, so if we, if we don't agree with moving it forward as is, then would we vote no, and then amend it to table it with...
You could amend it right now, if you choose. You can, you can make a motion to amend it, and we'd vote on that motion.
So I would make a motion to amend with restrictions on letting, allowing them in residential and commercial office zones, on districts with restrictions on size, and what I would suggest is not going above the 20-foot size.
We have, we have a motion, an amendment for the placement of restrictions on 20, eight-by-20 storage units. All in favor of that addendum, vote aye.
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 Aye. Did we get, was that unanimous, or?
No.
All, all those opposed? Do we have any opposing votes? Okay, so it appears to, to my poor math skills again, that the motion, the amendment, the amendment to the motion passed. So do we now have a, do we now, we, we probably need to do some, some further work on this, because I do see some, some problems that, that Eric has brought forward that are valid. Do we want to table this and send it back to committee and have them work out the explosion ordinances, or the vending ordinances, or? It's under 160 square feet, so it meets with the skid steer require, or the skid structure requirements. So do you see, Eric, do you see some problems that we need to work on?
Your honor, I'll respectfully request a little bit more direction.
Okay.
And I think maybe also some clarification as to what we're exactly doing with this motion, the amendment, let's make sure we're clear on that also. So could you clarify that a little bit?
Sure.
Rebecca, I think there was some used looks.
Yep, so what I did, I made a motion to, shipping containers are prohibited in all residential and commercial office zone districts that are over the eight-by-20, or I guess eight-by-21, because again, I'm saying eight-by-20 and below would be allowed. If that makes sense.
Do you, do you want to put any restrictions as to vending?
So many time on it.
Now, the time, the time restriction was for, for...
It's for temporary.
Was for temporary. It's not for permanent, would not be for permanent storage. You can, you can make the motion for permanent storage, or you can, or you can keep it with temporary storage.
And maybe, Mr. Carr, would it, would it be a good idea to, to maybe table this and kind of go to the Planning Commission with some of the things you've heard from the audience, some of the things you've heard from the council, and kind of see if they have any alternatives or any other ways they might want to work this, or, or, you were looking for guidance. What kind of guidance are you looking for?
Your honor.
Yes.
That would be fine. I can modify the proposed ordinance in any way you see fit. Just let me know what you want.
Councilman Bailey.
Okay, so we have an amendment that we've approved that says shipping containers would be allowed as long as they're under, 20-foot or under. Okay, and the way we've done this in the past is, so then it's been amended, we would vote and pass it on first reading, or not pass it on first reading, whichever the vote comes out. And then the change would be made, so that on second reading, then we would see one that says shipping containers above 20 feet would not be allowed in residential areas. That's how we would have done it in the past.
Thank you. That does make...
And I think, then that gives staff the time to change, to modify the wording, to reflect the amendment, and then it would have second reading, and then if we wanted to make a change then, we can make another change then, and then we would go on to third reading.
Okay.
Your honor.
Your honor.
Go ahead, Eric.
I'm sorry. I would be remiss not to mention that the smaller the container during an energetic release or explosion amplifies that greatly, exponentially, actually. So just food for thought.
Thank you.
Your, your honor, if I may, a question for clarification on our part. It is our understanding that if, we've passed the amendment, and so if council votes this through on first reading, then you'll expect the new document back with the changes and recommendations from staff as to, in response to the conversation tonight.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Councilman Bailey, let's, let's go ahead with the amendment passed, let's go ahead and take a vote on ordinance 19-001 on first reading with the amendment in place. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed, say no. It, it does pass, and we would, we would look for further, further clarification in the second reading. That work for you.
Your honor, thank you. Yes.
Thank you. Let's move on to the quarterly fiscal health report. Item number 14 with the finance director report, please.
Thank you, your honor. In listening to our shipping container discussion, I have discovered that an eight-by-20-foot shipping container weighs 4,760 pounds. So I'm going to take 4,760 pounds off your shoulders temporarily, and let's talk about budget.
It's good to know.
Yeah. So every quarter, we are required to provide a quarterly fiscal health report to you as council members and to our general public, just to let you know about how we are keeping on track with our budget and how we are performing financially. For the new members of the council and for the benefit of the citizens listening in the audience, this most recent fiscal year, the governing body of the city approved a fiscal year budget totaling $26,489,253. And I am happy to share with you our second quarter budgetary results. I've included slides in each of your packets so that you have some detailed information with regards to, to our funds, revenues and expenditures, and how they performed. And the general fund itself is the primary operating fund of the city, and it's used to account for most of the revenues and expenditures of the tax-supported activities of the city. There are several departments within the general fund, which includes, some of them include the police department, streets and alleys, weed and pests, parks, community development, and municipal court, just to name a few. All of these departments of the city are supported by the general fund, with the exception of water, wastewater, and sanitation. This fiscal year, the funds allocated by the general fund make up 40% of the city's budget, and the sources that, that support the general fund include taxes, governmental funding and fees collected from licenses and permits. The city also receives a direct distribution from the state of Wyoming. It's referred to as supplemental funding in our budget. So when you're looking through revenues and you see something titled supplemental funding, that is over-the-cap mineral royalties that we receive from the state, and it's appropriated through the state legislature every year. The funds are largely used in our budget to fund capital projects, equipment purchases, and one-time expenditures. We also use supplemental funding to support community service programs. Some of those programs would be the Paws Animal Shelter, the Volunteers of America, the Chamber of Commerce, our recreation, and the like. The general fund closed the second quarter with a positive balance of $91,493. And you can see through your slides that I presented, just it provides you with a breakdown of what revenues we received, and then also the expenses that we have paid through the first half of the year. I did want to point out that when the budget was approved by the council, that also included transfers in the general fund for both operational and capital expenditures. This quarter, the approved transfer of $150,000 that was made from the general fund to support the airline minimum revenue guarantee, so that transfer has taken place in our budget as of now, well, as of December 31st. Additionally, the council approved a transfer of $450,000 from reserves assigned specifically to the North Federal Boulevard construction project. Thus far, based on the expenditures that we have spent that were allocated towards the general fund, we transferred $423,676 to fund this project. And if you're looking at your report that I provided to you, that transfer is reflected in the line titled miscellaneous revenue, so that is where the $423,000 is housed. Oops. Sorry, I'm not, grab me on this. Look back, those slides here. Don't scroll. Um, let's see. Also additionally, if you'll look at your report, you'll notice down at the bottom, under the expenses line item, we did budget that we were going to transfer some funds for airport capital, and also that we would be budgeting funds to transfer for airport operations. I'm going to throw just a little bit of a kink in the slides that you received, and I'm going to ask you to turn to page 98 of your report. This actually gives you information regarding the status and condition of the airport fund right now. So while the airport fund is included in the general fund, the revenues and expenditures for this fund are tracked separately. This assists us in providing more accurate financial reporting when it comes to applying for state and federal funding for the airport. Generally speaking, airport capital projects are funded at 93.75%. And then in federal dollars, 3.75% of the funding comes from state dollars, and then 2.5% of the funds that we expand for airport projects actually comes out of the city of Riverton's pocket. And then the operational revenues for the airport are derived from ground lease rental... And then the operational revenues for the airport are derived from ground lease rentals, aviation fuel tax, car rental income, and landing fees. So the remaining revenues to offset, um, those expenditures, if we do not bring in the appropriate amount of revenues, are transferred from the general fund. So at the close of the quarter, you can see on your slide that the airport fund was running at a deficit of a hundred and sixty-seven thousand eight oh seven fifty-six. I do need to mention that we had expended funds for the airport project, and we do, we are awaiting a pending grant reimbursement in the amount of seventy-nine thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars for that. So the bottom line difference then really is that we are running at a deficit of eighty-eight thousand one hundred and ninety dollars and sixteen cents. When we budgeted funds for the year, we budgeted that we would be transferring a hundred and one thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars from the general fund to support the airport, so we're still staying ahead of the game right now. Does anybody have any questions for me so far? Okay. The next slide that you'll see is the water fund. Now, it's important to remember that the enterprise funds are used to account for operations that are financed and operated in a manner similar to any other business. The fees from the enterprise fund are derived from the user charges that we charge our citizens to provide, um, water service operations. The revenue should adequately, adequately pay for the cost of operation and maintenance as well as establishing funds for future capital projects. At this point, we closed out the quarter with a positive of five hundred and thirty-two thousand six hundred and forty-eight dollars in the water fund. So the water fund is doing great at this moment. It's important to know that we are still in the middle of our North Federal construction project, and we will be facing some expenses next spring as things take off again and we, we start those projects up again. Additionally, it's larger at the five hundred and thirty-two thousand because we did receive a hundred and ninety-two thousand at the beginning of this fiscal year in reimbursements for grants for expenditures that we realized last fiscal year. So that's part of the reason why that number is a little bit high right now. The next slide that you'll see is the wastewater fund, and again, the revenues and the expenses compare, just as you've seen in your other slides. The wastewater fund is operating right now, we are ahead, revenues are outpacing expenses by sixty thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars, so margins a little bit smaller on that particular fund, but we are still operating at a positive. And then the last fund, well, not the last one, the next fund that I have is the sanitation fund. This is again for our, our sanitation services. The total projected budget for sanitation was two million four hundred and fifty-two thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars, and our revenues have outpaced our expenditures through the first six months of the year by a hundred and fifty-nine thousand one oh five. Okay, the next slide that we have is the air service funds. This is the airline minimum revenue guarantee. This is the amount of money that the city has committed, and we have also partnered with other entities, including the city of Lander and Fremont County, to help provide and support air service in Riverton. The city also receives reimbursements from the state of Wyoming under their ASAP, the Wyoming Air Service Enhancement Program Grant, and we do receive reimbursements for every amount that we spend for air service to, to support through Denver Air Connection. It's a grant at sixty percent. So at the close of the quarter, the air service fund had a positive balance of a hundred and sixty-three thousand eight hundred and eighty-five, um, dollars. Now, we did receive a hundred and fifty-two thousand from the city of Lander and a hundred and fifty thousand from Fremont County to help fund this as well. We also budgeted, of course, that we would be transferring a hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of our supplemental funding to support this program, and that transfer has been made, so that's part of the reason why we are looking pretty good on that right now. The average weekly invoice paid out of this fund for the, the second quarter of the year was thirty thousand eighty-three dollars, but we have had some fantastic invoices over the last few weeks, and they have started coming in significantly lower, which means that our employments are helping, helping to support the air service. Okay, and with that, I would stand for any questions that you might have regarding the fiscal health report.
Okay.
What my, what were they, what's previous average on the employment, uh, when you're paying out thirty thousand plus, what is it, what has it normally have been in the past?
So last quarter, when I reported the annual, or the average invoice, it was just right at about thirty thousand eight hundred dollars. So for first and second quarter, it has not dropped, it's dropped, not significantly, but we're really starting to see the changes, um, you'll, those new changes will be reflected in the next report.
So the next quarter, it should venture a guess, which way we're going?
I'm going to defer to Kyle Butterfield on that.
Your Honor, uh, next quarter, you'll probably see a little bit of lower traffic because of the seasonality, um, of the winter months, and so even though we are having a great performance, a lot of that occurred because of the holiday travel. We do anticipate, um, in line with the industry, that we'll have some lower months for January, February, March, but then we'll rebound as we go into the summer.
You think we'll hit ten thousand?
For the calendar year that just completed, we did not hit ten thousand. For the upcoming year, I think we're, um, very capable of doing that.
So what was our previous employment for the calendar year that we're counting?
Uh, the calendar year that just finished unofficially, we're sitting around seventy-five hundred employments. Um, we were about at that last year as well, but, uh, keep in mind, we did have several months with two airlines operating, um, which I think increased that number a little bit for two calendar years ago. So the calendar year that just ended, two thousand and eighteen, we landed about seventy-five hundred employments.
Thank you. Any other questions? Great presentation, nice numbers, appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, next, uh, in an upcoming council meeting, we'll be presenting, um, some information regarding a budget amendment, mid-year budget amendment, um, with you as well, so, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. There's no action needed on, on that report, and so let's go to, um, somebody put their own page in the wrong spot.
Chip ceiling.
Yeah, thank you. We're on item fifteen, contract agreement, uh, airport chip ceiling project, Public Works Director's Report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The agreement before you is considered, um, is in consideration of a capital project that will occur next fiscal year. This is a partnering project that we will, um, enter with the state. Your Honor, can I start over?
Sure.
It's a little late. I probably should just read this instead of ad lib. Excuse me, so, th- this project is something that we will partner with Wyoming Department of Transportation, specifically the Aeronautics Division. YDOT, um, does regional crack seal projects, and, um, every four years, Riverton has an opportunity to participate in these regional crack seal projects. The upcoming year is our year to participate in that. The reason YDOT does this pro, program is to create an economy of scale for airports in regions to participate and hopefully receive, um, a better contract price for the crack seal that would need to occur or comply with our safety regulations that are put upon us by the FAA. YDOT, for this project, takes on all of the engineering and assessment costs associated with the project. That has already occurred, they've visited the airports in the region, ours included, and made an assessment of the necessary cracks to be, um, filled by this project. The city of Riverton, in entering into this agreement, agrees to pay for twenty percent of the construction costs. YDOT pays for eighty percent of the cost. The agreement also stipulates that if there is an unanticipated overage for this project, um, the city of Riverton agrees to pay twenty percent of twenty percent of that overage, if that makes sense. Right now, the estimated cost for this project is ninety-two thousand dollars. The local funds supporting that are estimated at eighteen thousand. When we put this into the capital plan, we estimated that it was going to be a hundred thousand with a twenty thousand contribution from the city of Riverton. YDOT has just received, um, proposals from interested contractors, and so they are anxiously looking to get our, um, agreement executed so this can move forward for the upcoming construction season. With that, I apologize for stumbling through that a little bit, but I'll stand for any questions.
Does anybody have a question? Kyle?
So YDOT is a general contractor, and they're subbing it out? They're not going to be doing the work, but they're going to guarantee the work?
Your Honor, Councilman, uh, YDOT would be considered the owner of the project. They will, um, bid and hire a contractor to do all the work for them.
So it might be Local Seventy-One, or it could be somebody else, but they're not going to be doing it with their own equipment?
Your Honor, that is correct, Councilman, it will be a contractor doing the work.
Any further discussion? The chair would, would entertain a motion for the approval of the contract between YDOT and the city of Riverton.
So moved? Second.
Any further discussion or amendments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mayor votes aye, motion passes. We're now down to, um, reports and comments, uh, council of comments, Kyle, could we start with you?
The only comment I've got is, the money we spend on the federal project, the lighting after hours versus what we had previously is fantastic. Driving on the new highway, the snow, the slope, the removal, we're lucky that we live in Wyoming where we've got that. You don't see that in sandy Utah, I'll tell you that.
Thank you, any other comments? Councilman Johnson?
Yes, Your Honor, I was going to report on my committees that I was newly appointed to. Uh, first is the Paws Committee. I attended a meeting last Tuesday evening, um, and they're planning for a big event coming up for Mardi Gras, so it'll be called Marty Paws, so that'll be exciting. They haven't started, um, advertising for it yet, um, they're waiting on tickets to come in, so that'll be coming shortly. Um, the Paws Board, actually, their normal meetings are the third Tuesday of each month, um, at five-thirty. They wanted me to give a quick report on their, um, monthly numbers, um, it's a simple one, the council knows these numbers. Um, for the month of December, they, um, had an intake of thirty dogs, six cats. The out, the animals going out, um, they had ten dogs up for, that went out for adoption, um, ten that were returned to their owner, and then one that was euthanized, and this is something they want me to make it clear to the public because there was some discussion on this, they only euthanize animals if that animal is going to be passing away or suffering, that is the only thing they would euthanize an animal, and they want to make that clear. Um, the cats, they had, um, fourteen that went out for adoption the month of December, two that were returned to their owner, and then one that was unfortunately stolen from the facility. So, yeah, somebody really wanted that kitty, so hopefully went to a good home. The, um, did actually have a discussion tonight about the potential dog park that Kathy Klein has been working diligently on, which she intends to present to us here in the near future. That's pretty much all I have for the Paws. The Parks Committee, we are going to begin, um, meeting weekly, beginning next week, um, up through March, um, completing our master plan for the parks to present to council. My next committee that I was appointed on was the Chamber Board. Um, we had a meeting scheduled for, or, yes, on Thursday, however, we did, was rescheduled due to, um, the fact that we were going to have our next meeting February seventh, so it just took the month of January off for that, those meetings would be the first Thursday of the month. The next thing I want to report on is the, uh, Rendezvous Games, which is in a, a committee with council, but Rendezvous Games is a committee that I'm on. Our, our event is February second, as of today, we have five teams registered out of a total of twelve teams that we're looking for, so if you know of a business or organization that wants to submit a team, they just need to go see Megan at the, at the city hall, file a registration form, and then pay the fee, the fee is a hundred dollars, it's going to be a lot of fun, so even if you don't want to participate as a team, bring your family and your friends and come, and come watch those teams participate. But that's all that I have for tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you. I got to attend the Force Committee meeting that was this Monday, and, again, they have prioritized and chosen three projects for next year that they will be working on. Kyle and Don are getting estimates for those and doing the engineering and going to hopefully have those projects ready to bid early spring so that we can take advantage of the, the pricing that we get, doing it early in the summer so that they have all summer to work and, and all that kind of stuff. And then they've also chosen a couple of projects, if we do have the budget, if the projects come in and, you know, in a reasonable fashion, um, that they're going to, a couple of other projects that we may be able to get to do if, if the funds are available. Of course, we still are, have North Federal this year that we're going to spend some, a big chunk of money on, but, uh, hopefully that'll be all done, and, like Kyle said, uh, the, the new street and the new lighting, as I was coming up the street today, the lights all came on right as I was driving up the street, and it's pretty impressive, it really looks nice, and, and I, I think it's going to really make the city of Riverton look very, very nice, so. Other than that, not in my official capacity, but I, I was lucky enough to go down to Cheyenne and attend the inauguration of the governor, and that was a really neat experience, and we had quite a few people from Fremont County down there, and, uh, so that, that was a really cool experience, and of course, the legislators, legislature is in session and, and, uh, they've got a lot more problems than we do, so, we, we got to feel lucky, I think, so, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Tim?
Uh, yes, uh, we had the opportunity to meet with the Fremont County, uh, School District Twenty-Five Rec Board, listened to all the proposals, a lot of people in the community that are trying to do a lot of good things there, and, um, regrettably, you only have so much money to work with, and, uh, I don't have the numbers in front of me if I were sitting right here next to, uh, um, uh, let's see, who all was there, but anyway, they, we, we did very well at trying to add up and kind of see, you know, what we're looking at. The requests really weren't that much more than what we were looking at, so I think that, for the most part, that a lot of those, uh, requests can get funded, that had, will not be decided until the next meeting, though. But anyway, I appreciate the work that they've been putting into that board, there's a lot of, it surprises you to think of all the different things that are being funded in all the different capacities, you know, the city council funds certain things, uh, the, uh, rec board funds certain things, but, uh, it was a good meeting. Um, other than that, I missed solutions, so maybe Carla could talk about that, but, um, that's all I have to report on. I was ill, sorry.
Thank you.
That happens.
Regrettably.
Carla?
Uh, yeah, I, I went to my first solutions committee meeting last week, and, um, we had a great presentation from, uh, Mary Axe Thelme and, uh, Terry Snyder from the school district. Um, some really good things in the works as far as the Boys and Girls Club go. Um, they've got some really neat ideas, and, and we're just kind of slowly moving forward with that. Um, what was the other thing? We just kind of revisited the goals that we have as a committee. And then, of course, we, um, always looking for new members, so if we can get volunteers, that's great. Uh, one positive note, um, I did contact the director of VOA today, Ron Woodward, and he agreed to join our committee, so, pretty excited about that. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you. City Administrator's Report and, uh, Wham! Voting Delegate Form, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. We'll front load this a little bit. Uh, this coming, this coming February, we're going to be having the Wham! Winter Workshop, and that's February twentieth through the twenty-second, and it will be in Cheyenne. As is usual with these, we have a rep, we have representation on the overall board, not the Board of Direct, not the Board of Directors yet necessarily, but the overall board, and we have one representative in council, um, is to choose who that representative is going to be, um, by a general, uh, our general process of a recommendation and an approval by the council as a whole. That individual would then attend and would vote on the Thursday, uh, where the actual meeting was held. At that meeting, there is actually going to be a discussion about who our regional Board of Director Chair is going to be. If you remember, Holly, uh, Holly Gibbon held that position for us, so there'll be some, uh, additional possibilities for service. The individual that is voted on this evening as the representative does not necessarily The individual that is voted on this evening as the representative does not necessarily have to be the person, my understanding is, does not have to be the person that becomes the regional rep if they were in attendance. So, for instance, if Councilman Hancock and Councilman Bailey went down, and Councilman Bailey was our representative, but a Councilman Hancock could be nominated as an elected official. With that being said, we would request that council consider appointing somebody to be the voting delegate at the WHAM Winter Workshop. And we would stand for any questions, and then I'll go through the rest of my report.
We're just asking for somebody to be the WHAM voting delegate, correct?
Yes, your honor.
Anybody that would like to do that, would you volunteer? Step forward.
I think I, right now, as it stands, was thinking that I would go to WHAM. I don't know if anybody else from the council was planning on attending.
I will be to the February meeting also, so I think it's real important that we have good representation at WHAM, and we need to be there in force. So, it is costly to the city. The city has to pay for those expenses, so, you know, that would be my suggestion, that we make sure that we come and go and participate. So, let's take a vote on, how do you want to do that?
A motion from anybody to designate whoever you choose as, and also, as you, sorry, thank you, Kristen, just reminded, we need an alternate as well. So, if we have two individuals going, one could be the representative, the other one the alternate.
Okay. Your honor, I would move that we select Tim as our WHAM representative and Mayor Guard as the alternate if he's not able to attend.
Second.
We have a motion to send Councilman Tim Hancock as the WHAM representative with an alternative, Mayor Guard. All of those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Mayor votes aye. That motion passes. Back to you, Tony.
Thank you, your honor. Just a couple items. We would remind everybody about the rendezvous games February 2nd and getting the sign up. That is a city-sponsored event, and they've been working diligently. They've had a good Facebook presence, and they've been showing, you know, the different events that they're going to have. We had some questions at Rotary today about it, and it was fun to talk about it for a little bit. So, a big thank you to those putting it on and the work that they're doing. I know we'll be attending, so. We have an airport board this Friday at 8:00 AM for your information if you so choose to attend. Next Tuesday, well, actually, starting out this evening, we had a public information meeting, getting some feedback from our community with regard to the redesign on Village Drive. That is something, it was very well-attended this evening. I mean, I think it was a pretty packed room next door, and it only let out a little bit before this meeting. So, staff was able to get a great deal of information. And we have another one of those coming up about Cooper Road on the 22nd at 6:00 PM. So, if, we would just remind the community that that is going to attend, and we do appreciate the attendance as it provides feedback for us when we're doing design projects. That's important to us, so we get it right. The only, the last thing I would say is, obviously, you've seen a great deal of financial information presented to you this evening. We started out with a clean audit report. We looked down here towards our goals, and while we understand that we're trying to do that every year, it's nice to come back to you and you hear there's no problems, there's no findings, and that's because of the diligent work of staff. I would just thank everybody on staff who makes that happen every single day and does it, and especially, obviously, Mia and her work in the finance department. They do such an exceptional job. I just wanted to say thank you to them. With that, I have no additional items. However, if it's okay, I do have, we do have a couple, an item that I would have Kyle speak to you about with regard to ASAP, if that would be okay.
Great. Please do.
Perfect. Thank you, Tony, your honor. Just as a matter of information to follow up on the paragraph that was included in your weekly report from Friday. Staff has been working with Sheridan in regards to our air service enhancement program grant with the state of Wyoming, and we plan to submit an amendment request to our current grant to be considered on January 29th by the Aeronautics Commission. To have it considered on the 29th, we will submit our amendment on the 22nd of January. The schedule that we've been working on is relatively tight, and I appreciate the efforts of Sheridan, FAST, CAST, and our consultants and our hired airline provider. Right now, Forecast Inc. is preparing and finalizing a model for this amendment request, and Denver Air Connection is also preparing their model for the operating cost. The two things to be considered for this amendment request are, one, funds to help us get us through this current fiscal year. As you remember, we presented the situation with the fuel. This amendment request will address that, and then it will also address a second component that we have not talked about yet. That second component is a bridging component to keep air service in Riverton up until the new capacity or the proposed, I should say, capacity purchase program comes into effect sometime next fiscal year. We anticipate, after coordinating with the state of Wyoming, that that will take into effect probably in the second quarter of the next fiscal year. Therefore, we want to work with the state of Wyoming to ensure that we have air service for the first quarter. This amendment request will amend our amount that we currently have with the state of Wyoming in our ASAP grant, and then also extend the timeframe so that it will go past our existing date of June 30th and get us up through September 30th. So, that is a matter of information. When the grant is considered and when we receive it, we will bring it to this body for approval, but we wanted to make sure you were up to date and knowing what we were doing before the end of this month. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Your honor, Kyle, I know that I heard that they got the bids in for the capacity purchase agreement. Do they have a date where they think that they're going to let everybody know what they're going to do?
Your honor, the information that I have right now is it will be after the legislative session convenes, or finishes, not convenes. So, we're looking at at least another month and a half before we really know anything regarding those proposals.
Tony, you got anything else?
No, your honor. That's all. Thank you.
Mayor's comments. The mayor's office is going to be open here in the city from 5 till 6:30 on Monday evenings. The phone number in that room is, I believe, I didn't have the prefix on my phone, but I believe it's 857-7691. It is a seven number, isn't it?
That's correct, yep.
Okay. My cellphone is also published there, and it's 851-1627. I have had the opportunity to attend most of the committee meetings, and I appreciate the council that has picked up the assignments and have been where they needed to be. It's nice to see you there. I need to ask that question. When we go to a meeting like tonight, and Tim's in the room, and Mike's in the room, and I walk in and take a seat, I didn't see anybody else. Carla, were you there?
Not sure.
So, do we need to watch that so that we don't have too many council people in those meetings?
Your honor, generally speaking, it's a good idea to be very cautious about having that many sitting council members in a room at the given time. There are exceptions for training, of course, like WHAM. A lot of the time, an entire council will attend, but usually, it's a good idea to try to minimize that as much as possible.
Okay, so what are your recommendations if I walk into a room and three councilmen are already there? Do I just leave, or do I throw one of those guys out? Or what do I do?
Your honor, truthfully, you're going to get as many answers as sometimes there are people in the room. What I have generally practiced is that, in the case that you're talking about this evening, everybody was scattered. Well, one, I don't think there was actually a quorum in the room at the time, so it didn't matter. If there were, and everybody's sitting in different corners of the room and not having a conversation, and you're listening to a public hearing on an item, obviously, the media was in the room, that is, that's an item that's just going to happen. You're trying to be informed. Assuming that nobody gets together and has a conversation right after or the like, that's part of living in a small community. If you ask somebody else that takes a hard-line view on it, they might give you something different. However, I don't personally believe it's reasonable to expect a council in a community like ours to not, what happens if you show up at a birthday party? And we know some of the same people, and that happens. So, as long as we're diligent not to have those conversations, I believe that, for the most part, we avoid the challenges.
Thank you.
Your honor?
Yes.
Tony, who would challenge that? I mean, I've heard that, you know, three members of the city council, who would bring a challenge on that?
Your honor, if I may, councilman, I've only seen, in 12 years, I've only seen one person say anything about the quorum of the council being in a room together at an event other than, I mean, at an event. It's rare. We have the law, we have best practices that we promote. However, we have to understand reason with that, too. It is a rarity, especially in the cases where nobody's actually sitting around having a conversation about something.
Just be aware of that's what you're saying.
Be aware and be, yes, sir.
I was, I'm sorry, I wasn't meaning to interrupt you, Tony. I guess, as I understand it, really, it has to do with like the Open Meetings Act, where we're not supposed to be sitting there and having, you know, a quorum of the council getting together and sitting there talking about council business. It's going to happen that, you know, if we're in a restaurant, it shouldn't be like if the mayor walks into the restaurant, then, you know, the person who's had the least amount of time on the council has to step out and pay for the bill for, you know, I'm joking. I'm trying to get Carla to pay for dinner, is what I'm saying. But, and that's really what it has to do with. It has to do with doing official business. That doesn't mean that we can't, you know, see each other occasionally on a social basis or anything like that. And so, I think that's really where the concern is, if I'm not mistaken, is it's got to do with the Open Meetings Act and the concern that the citizens might have, that there's council business that's being done out of an open meeting. So, as long as we're not sitting there and talking, you know, if we're going to sit down and if we so happen to have, I think, a quorum of the council in a restaurant somewhere, as long as we're not sitting there and talking about city business, not really as much of a concern, but maybe to avoid the appearance of a conflict or the appearance of that, it might be better to do kind of like Mr. Tolsted is saying, and I think just kind of go sit somewhere else.
Carla can only buy half of us lunch at a time.
Right.
Good to know.
We'll put out a schedule, sir.
That's right.
Thank you, Councilman Hancock and Tony. The other thing that I would like to bring up is it's been suggested, and this will have to be done by a motion and three readings, that we move the council times closer to 5:30, 6 o'clock, and we can discuss that. But we'd like to open that thought process, and mostly, that's for staff, so that they don't have to stay around for two hours and then come, you know, fill in that time. So, I would put that into your thought process and suggest that you might give that some thought. On the other side of that, we as council have to go get out of, get off of work and go home and feed the dog and do a few things ourselves, so we just need input. If that works into your schedule, or if it does not, it might be helpful for staff to move that up, so we're not here so late at night. The other thing that we did this week was with Captain Murphy and Sergeant Comers and Tony and myself, we went down and visited the crime scene on Monroe and visited with the people in that area. They were glad to get our insight and appreciate our questions if they were all right and if they had any questions. And so, we had nothing to do with the crime scene. We just wanted to make sure that the citizens knew that we were concerned about their property, about their state of mind, and we're still receiving some phone calls on that, and I really did appreciate Chief for his part of that. They've had a tough week or so and doing an exceptional job, and I just wanted to point out how I appreciated that effort. I have been in a lot of meetings lately, and I appreciate the invitations to be in those meetings. I'm going to try to hit all those committee meetings, so if I haven't got to yours, if you would tell me when PAWS is, I'll make sure that I get to PAWS. With that said, we do have an executive session that we need to discuss real estate, to consideration of site selection or purchase of real estate in accordance with Wyoming We would need a motion to adjourn into, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn the regular session meeting. No, excuse me, that's incorrect. I'm past that, right? So, we just, do we need a motion to move into executive?
Yes, your honor.
We would need a motion from the table to go to executive session for that real estate purpose.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of that? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will go into executive session.
Your honor, you would have Eric Carr, myself, and Kristen?
Sure.
That's okay.
If they'll come.
If they'll come, yeah? I'll ask them.
Mr. Tolsted, we don't have any need of any motions out of that meeting, do we?
No, your honor.
So, we'll move to adjourn. The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn the regular council meeting.
No, we have to get in the council meeting.
Oh. Chair entertains, well, okay. So, we need a motion to return to the general session.
From executive session.
I move that we reconvene into the general, or the regular session from the executive session.
Second.
So, Tim and Mike, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mayor says aye. Now, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn the regular session meeting.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We stand adjourned at 9:37.